I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join with me in the reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Reverend Jerry Bucinberg from Monticello Christian Church leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me thank you for this gathering this evening. We pray for your wisdom and your peace to rest on all who are gathered here that you give our city leaders the knowledge that they need to make decisions that are best for this community, that all may experience your grace and the common good. Thank you most of all for Jesus, our Lord and Savior, and we pray to you that we may be able to do that.
Amen. Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Frericks.
Here.
Ms. Seabans.
Here.
Ms. Harland.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Verres.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you. Public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer, the mayor. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. First up this evening is Dean Alpayne. Uh-huh. That microphone just talks to the camera, so you just have to speak.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'm Dean Alpayne. Some of you may not know I'm a retired human resources and budgeting director from University of Illinois, 30 years. I live at 519 Prairie Lane Drive in Ridge Point. The proposed solar power plant location will be directly behind us, looked on a hill. This proposal, did you know this proposal's not the norm for schools around the country? It is the worst aesthetically. It reduces considerable green space. It only needs the homeowners and the students versus encouraging interaction and community support. It will impact our property values. Everyone already admits that no one went on to live next to the proposed prison yard abandoned lot look. Even Vic is admitting it. My request for disability accommodation due to my light-induced migraines is being ignored when viable alternatives exist. Did you know that solar panels can be frameless? You can customize the backing, the inverters can be built in the panel under the roof. Solar panels on a metal roof have a cooling effect on the roof, saving further energy. Panels vary efficiency and power generation, yet no cost analysis in comparison of best choices has been conducted. Everyone so far has refused to do diligence on this project. They're kicking the can down the road to you with little to no information to base your decision on. Your five-year and long-term strategic plan repeatedly puts high quality of life, aesthetics, green space, and beautification as a strategic goal and high priority. This does not fit in with your strategic goals and guidelines. If this proposal was about solar energy and not about money, it would have been proactive with due diligence, researched, full engagement of stakeholders. We would have designed proposals, competitive bids, financial models, pros and cons, and legitimate projections of dependable metrics. The high school and elementary would have solar power and green building practices built into the remodel. It is not. A standing C metal roof is the easiest and most cost-effective method of installing solar panels. You can simply clamp them on in most cases. The roof and awnings are considered the most aesthetically pleasing and popular option by the solar industry. Schools consider the roof awning option the most engaging and integrating to the students. How the prison abandoned lot look is the prison abandoned lot looking inviting or engaging with a seven-foot barbed wire conduit security fence threatening death and burning and shock. Instead of integrating to the building where it feels a part of the students' lives, everyone is trying to put it as far away from the building as possible, behind a security fence, while sticking it on the homeowners. Not normal, not okay. Imagine for a moment a large solar awning facing south along the entire walkway where students catch the buses and students from town funnel through. Imagine that the design is aesthetically pleasing and it protects the students from weather where they catch the buses with lights that are powered by the solar energy. Imagine out the back of the school, large solar awnings that provide shade and are aesthetically enhancing the look of the school, with fans and charging stations run by solar power, with tables where the students can eat and study outside. No security fences, no threats of electrocution, no weeds. Where were any grants written? Farmington Central School District received 1.1 million from the state for the exact same number of solar panels that they put on their roofs and had a ribbon-cutting ceremony complete with state reps. Do you see that in our future with our abandoned lot prison yard look? The Illinois Rural Electric Cooperative in Scott County installed a 2,200 solar panel plant on existing power station land, 900K worth of grants for a $1.8 million project. Vic talks about the fuzzy 40% savings and everyone perks up, yet no one provided with data metrics, no data aggregation, proven projects, and financial models. The power company makes all of the money for this. Has anyone considered a solar farm through a local LLC that has a vested interest in the community and will push the 30% solar investment tax credit back into the cost of the panels and let the school take full advantage of the renewable energy credits? Everyone acts like this is a race for 30% investment tax credit that all goes to the power company. There is every intention that and thought that it'll be extended as it was in 2009. Even McConnell is on board. If not, it goes to 20% next year. If you research, you will find the majority of people in 2019 nationwide are moving away from the power purchase agreement, not towards it. They have figured out just how poor the deal is. The deal locks us into -- am I done?
I wasn't made.
Okay. The deal locks us into paying for solar power to similar rates of power as we pay now, even more at times, for the next 15 years. And then we have the option to buy the panels or continue the same deal. Solar panel cost recovery averages seven and a half to 10 years, depending on the type of panel and the installation cost.
Okay.
Is Danny's -- am I done?
It's time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
My husband's gonna take over.
All right, very good. Bruce.
Tank team is good.
Yeah?
It really is.
I haven't read this and I don't have my glasses.
I know. You have my final paragraph. I'll start here.
I'm Bruce. I live at 519 also, Prairie Lane. So I'll try to read this. She says, uh, we're back to -- let me see. My distribution charge for the power bill is 25%, not 40%. You read that, I thought. And then add in the other taxes and the fees per kilowatt. Okay. And let's work out a financial model, partners with the right LLC and truly savings. Go for it. Cost recovery period.
Oh, wait.
It's a wash. At the end of the cost recovery period, we own the panels and pay nothing for the solar power moving forward. We get the whole pie, not the work.
Do the work.
Do the work, okay. My distribution charge, my distribution charge on my power bill is 25%, not 40. If you add the other taxes and fees per kilowatt, I get 33% because you're still using power from Antrim and really all you can expect is 45 to 50% average annual power usage reduction based on the weather and the same time usage. That quickly turns into percentage savings of 17 to 20%. Now imagine instead of a seven to 10 years, owning the panels and saving all the power costs that we generate for the next 15 years. If you lock into a 15-year deal, you get the scraps. Partnering with the right LLC and there's still no upfront cost, but we get every possible dollar for the school that has been looked at, but it has not been looked at nor even considered. That's the biggest thing, trying to find out what the heck is going on. We can't get answers. Nobody wants to talk about it, anything like that. I better jump here. Do it the right way. I will help if anyone wants to, wants me to, as to know. I'm sure I have another project left in me. Putting the solar panels on the roof solves all. Face in the awnings as we are able. Fundraiser sponsor panels, fundraise, sponsor panels, write these grant proposals. You make your decision, but you have your own, you have your own then. And if you want, if you won't want anything done to you, I know, but you have to own that if you want something done to you. I think you guys all have a copy of this, don't they?
No, they don't. Don't worry.
But if you have to own them, the golden rule is not due unto others as long as it is not being done to you. Decide my path. I do nothing halfway and I'm done crying. What I wanted to say is we've got a complete runaround about the whole deal. And the one thing, if these guys say there are no hazardous chemicals in these panels, they are using the most inefficient panels there are on the market, is my guess from what I've read. Only way to get anything efficient, the most efficient panels do have hazardous chemicals in them. Question is, if these things go bad, what do they do? Do they replace it with the same panel or do they upgrade them, whatever? That's, those are the kind of things we never get answered. And obviously, the latest proposal I've seen about hiding it with trees and along the tree line and everything, so they obviously know it is an eyesore. It will be an eyesore for everyone. Incorporate it into the building, look much better. And this BS about the property values, we would not build our house there, we would not buy a house with this. Life really said a lot of things. And one thing you can notice, I'm guessing a lot of the people that are here are for support for not, for you guys voting no against this.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You may also continue.
Next up is Jenny Galt.
I'm coming to the party late because I didn't know about any of this, even though I live on 304 Prairie Lane last couple of years, with my mother. And what I want to know is, and what I'm gathering, I didn't get a letter or anything about it, and it is ending up in my backyard too because I have my house for sale and it could be affecting the sale of it. Well, it is affecting the sale of it. So what I'm wondering is, where do you go for answers? Like, to me, the obvious is on the roof, but when the answer or questions are asked, I'm not, nobody can give me answers, like who you speak to about that or, you know, the efficiency of, or why are these things being chosen over other things? Where do you go for that?
This is not supposed to be a question and answer session.
Oh, I thought it was.
But I will say, have you contacted the school district to find out what the plans are?
Well, yeah, I mean, I know what those are. I haven't contacted anybody.
But that's where the plan is. We just act on what's sent to us from the planning commission.
Okay, so this is a forum for people to say yea or nay?
This is, the council will vote on the information that we've been forwarded from the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, well, I guess the only thing I'd like to say then is, even though it's not in my backyard, it is now, and that ain't cool. And I don't like the idea that it can be decided, you know, behind closed doors, you know what I mean?
Oh, no, there was a public hearing for this and there was --
I didn't know anything about this.
Well, that's --
Because I don't read the papers, is that why?
That could be. But there were, there was, there was a public Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the school board had a meeting, what was it, last week where they talked about this?
Okay, at this point, the only option is to go to the school?
Well, they have all the information. It's their project.
That's where I need to go.
Yeah, yeah.
All right?
Okay, sorry, I couldn't help you better than that. Next is Kelly Hamblin.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hamblin. I live at 511 Prairie Lane, so this solar farm will be right behind us as well. Honestly, don't know what to say because I spoke at the school board meeting and my husband spoke at the zoning board meeting, and we're both kind of frustrated because we feel like we've just been dismissed, like any of our concerns are just easily, once they start talking amongst themselves and we're not allowed to talk anymore, as I assume you guys will get to, which is fine. I feel like when they do bring up any points we made, they just kind of squash them in like two seconds. And a little background about me is I grew up in Monticello. I went to college in Decatur. I decided Monticello was safe and I came back. I decided, you know, a lot of kids are like, can't wait to get out, and I actually kind of missed, you know, the small town. And I, when I moved back, I saved my money and I took about a year, year and a half to decide where to live. And I chose 511 Prairie Lane and it, I went through so many homes, like it was not an easy process. And I had my parents helping me because I was young. And I looked at it as an investment if I ever got married, which now I'm married and my husband, we've both lived there for like six years now. I think I've lived there a little over 10. But we've, you know, we're outgrowing our place. It's our investment. We want to stay in Monticello and probably get a little bigger place, but we are terrified that this is going to hurt our property value and our investment in a matter of just being dismissed. Like our, like our concern for that is just like, you know, it just really feels like that. But I guess I wanted to bring up with, at the zoning board meeting, a few things that they, I felt they kind of just dismissed. And one of them was, one of the people said, a realtor said it would not affect our property values. Well, I think that's subjective. Like, I had a realtor tell me, no, you're, you have every right to be concerned. I don't know, you know, I, it may, you know, they could eventually sell it, but how long? And, you know, the longer it's listed, the more you have to price cut and the less you're going to make, so that is affecting your property value. A second thing they brought up was, one of them said, a quick Google search showed assessments in Texas with properties near solar fields are not affected. Okay, I went to college and whenever I did research, they told me, you can't just stick it in Google. You can't just trust everything with Google. You need to look at the website, you know, is the research official? So, and they even said, a quick Google search. And I'm not discrediting, but it felt very dismissive that they just did a quick Google search and they were going to say that. And, I mean, we can all tell you, we wouldn't have bought where we were living now if a solar farm was right behind it where they're proposing. And I don't think most of us are against solar. It's not the idea, it's just how sloppily it's kind of appears to have been put together. And one other thing they said is, a lot of us, or maybe not a lot of us, but maybe a few people brought up the Savoy Solar Farm, and they said, we can't compare this solar farm to Savoy's because of the size. Well, I agree, but for a different reason. We can't compare it because it's not across the sidewalk, you know, behind somebody's backyard. It's not, it's across a road. I was, before they proposed the trees, I could sit on my couch while watching TV and look out and see it. Like, I could be eating dinner and look out and see it. I would be in my bedroom, sit up in bed and look out and see it. There's not, I don't know how long, how far the trees, if they're still doing that, will come down. But yeah, it's not the same. It's different. And I don't know if you guys are aware of it, last week Danville voted down a solar project that upset a lot of their residents. So their zoning board had passed it, but then it got to their city council and they listened to their residents. And I don't know where they're going, but their residents had the same concerns we did, the quality of life, you know, you're looking out and you're seeing that, you know, there's just better ways to do it. And I guess that's all we're trying to say is, we're not against it, just, we don't want to see that. We don't want to be, our investment to be affected by just a quick decision, is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Austin Hamblin.
Hello, Austin Hamblin, I live at 511 Prairie Lane. And just wanted to express my frustration in the same thing that my wife said, it just feels very dismissive and, you know, the whole property value thing. Another big frustration I have is, the school board, Vic, was approached by Clean Energy Group and that's been it. From my knowledge, they haven't bid it out to anyone else. As anyone knows, whenever you start a construction project or something like this, you guys probably did for the school, you get bids and you see what companies offer what. That hasn't been done, so, I mean, what you guys are voting on tonight is just one company's design. There's two retention ponds out there and Clean Energy Design said they can't do it there, you know, water, electricity doesn't mix and all that. There are companies out there that build solar farms in retention ponds. And the retention pond on the northeast side of the, of the lot there, it sits down in there, up on a hill. My wife and I went out there last night and as cars were driving by on Monticello Road, you can't even see them because, because that hill sits up so high. There's better options and there's the school, there's the tent awnings and all that. You know, not against solar, I think it's great. It's just frustrating that it's only been bid out by one company and that's just not how you do things. You have to get different price points and different options. That's just, that's just very amateur, farm it out to one person, not get other opinions. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated June 11, 2019 through June 24, 2019. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, June 10, 2019. Historic preservation meeting minutes, April 2, 2019. Budget report for five months ending May 31, 2019. And treasurer's report, May 31, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still no.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions or comments?
I noticed another nearly $2,000 tract date engineering there. Is there a, I know we've talked about this before, but is there some proposal when that will be complete? I mean, does it ever get complete? We spent a lot of money there.
We have, when was it? Maybe three or four meetings ago, we ran the numbers and presented it to council. And we're well below what Pfizer, Biobin agreed to reimburse us for. This year, we're anticipating it to go out for, to submit a request for proposal. So we are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, but there'll be a few more invoices yet.
The invoices are just going to go up a little bit as they prepare the bid documents for their remediation. So there's a little work involved with that as opposed to calling EPA and waiting on their timeline. They've already given the go-ahead, so now the engineers are preparing the bid documents. Once that is advertised and fulfilled, then they can remediate and then we can look forward with the proposal.
All right, thank you.
But I can provide you what Terry reported to.
Okay. Anyone else hearing the same? May I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Verres?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Seabans?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report, upcoming events. The Monticello Farmers Market is on Thursdays from 3:30 to 6:30 PM on State and Livingston Street in front of the Community Building. Monticello Freedom Fest is Tuesday, July the 3rd at Lodge Park, is that right? Or is it Wednesday? It's not, it says Thursday on here and I know that's not right.
I'm just saying if you're waiting.
Thursday, okay. Wednesday, I think.
Wednesday.
Thank you. I have bad information. Fireworks Special Train is July 3 at the Wabash Depot. Open House Event at Eli Field is July the 3rd. Celebrate the 4th of July with the parade games and fireworks with our friends South in Bement. Red, Whites, and Blues is part of the Allerton Park Concert Series. The Monticello Recreation Foundation is selling ping pong balls for their Christmas in July Ping Pong Snowball Race. Tickets must be bought in advance to the race at 7:30 PM July 25 at the Monticello Family Aquatic Center. Balls will be dropped down the slide and float with assistance from swimmers. Towards the finish point, the top winners will receive a cash prize or a pool party. Moving on to the annual audit report presentation from May Conklin and King. I think Steve Groney is in the crowd somewhere. Oh, I forgot to, I'm sorry. One minute. It's with great pleasure that I nominate for the vacancy in Ward 4, Mike Kuhn. There were eight persons who indicated an interest in serving. I interviewed three of the eight and I, actually what I did was I interviewed people who have either run for it this time or run for the position in the past, and I think Mike was by far the, the one I wanted to be in the spot. So there's Mike, he's going to get the oath of office right now from the --
Scott, would you like Mike?
From our clerk, Jill Potts.
You want to, mayor?
Yeah.
You want to take a vote that day, approve your appointment?
That we approve your appointment.
We got, oh, I'm sorry. Are we, can I have a motion to approve the appointment? No one, no one's ever argued, but I guess you could if you wanted. Is there a second? I'm sorry. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? I didn't think there would be. Now, Jill. I'm just a little rattled.
That makes, that makes me feel better than everybody saying yea.
I'm just a little rattled because we don't usually have this many people here.
I see we can get this done.
All right.
Okay, feed up to me.
Aye, say your name.
Aye, Mike Kuhn.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman, Ward 4.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman, Ward 4.
In the city of Monticello.
In the city of Monticello.
In the county of Pyatt.
In the county of Pyatt.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward 4.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward 4.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I wish to say that.
And Mr. Alderman, you can take your seat now. Thanks for bailing me out, Jill, you know I have issues. Congratulations, Mike. Steve, that was close, you were almost sworn in.
I don't live in town.
Steve Groney from May Conklin and King will give us the audit presentation.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank everyone for once again engaging MCK as your audit firm of choice. We performed an audit on the 2018, 12/31/2018 financial statements of the city. Oh, first of all, I'm Steve Groney, partner of May Conklin and King, which we are now changing our name to MCK CPAs and Advisors, offices in Monticello, Decatur, and Bloomington. Been working with or around the city audit for a number of years, and I appreciate you having me. Once again, our auditor's opinion this year is the same as it has been in the past. It's qualified for one item. It's qualified because the city has chosen not to have actuaries, reports, and studies done on its other post-employment benefit plan, which is the fact that you offer health insurance to people who retire prior to reaching their social security age. Crazy accounting standards say that you should then have actuaries figure out how much money it's going to cost you over the life of how many people anticipate to go through this program. And rather than go through that cost, which would be substantial thousands probably, cities decided to let us put that little paragraph in the report, like many of our clients do. So other than that, a very clean report, a good audit, lots of help from everyone here, and it was, it went very well this year. As you know from the past, or if you're learning for the first time, like are new aldermen, these financial statements have two parts. You have the classic fund and financial statements. They're basically on the cash basis. You guys are familiar with that, revenues, expenditures. But there's a second set called the government-wide financial statements, which adds to funds like, like the general fund and those adds things like capital assets, so items that are bought and depreciated, large pieces of equipment, wastewater treatment lines, things like that. So we have presented both of those. So I wanted to go over some financial highlights, kind of 30,000-foot level, and I will answer any questions I can. So if you go to page three, which is the statement of net position, these are the government-wide financial statements. These are, look more like a business's financial statements. Current assets for the year ended at 10.8 million, which is up 300,000 from the prior year. Capital, our total assets for the year are up 6.5 million. Majority of that is the additional costs that were spent during the year on the wastewater treatment plan. Total liabilities for the year are up 6.1 million. Again, that equates with the other side, it's the debt related to the construction of the wastewater treatment plan. So overall, net position on the government So overall, net position on the government-wide level went up 400,000 from last year, which is very positive. On page five, you'll see similar figures, but these are on the fund financial statement. So without things like depreciation and capital assets. So you're basically there, you've got cash and CDs. And that is up about 200,000 from last year for the governmental funds, which is everything other than water and sewer. Turning on to page seven. This is basically your income statement on the fund financial statement side for the government funds such as general water fuel tax. Total revenues received for the year were actually down 164,000. One reason for that was the prior year had the $181,000 from when you sold 100 West Washington. So that was a reason that that went down. And then, of course, the state's replacement tax continues to decline. Total expenditures dispersed for the year went up 85,000 over the prior year for a total of 5.4 million. And then down in the other financing sources, there was a new no payable during the year, which was 530,000, which is for the Public Works Campus, the loan for the Public Works Campus. In the end, the net change to fund balance was, again, like I said on the prior page, positive 200,000. If you go over to page nine, this is what we call the proprietary funds, business-type funds, which are waterworks and sewerage. Again, like I said earlier, they're up a little over $6 million, which is basically two items. Another year's increase in rates for revenue. And then, of course, the big one being the additional costs on wastewater treatment. Liabilities are up the same. On page 10, which is the income statement of sorts for these business-type funds. Operating revenues were up 121,000. Again, another year of sewer revenue increase. Operating expenses were up 32,000, which is a little less than 3%. So probably just more cost-of-living type expenses. I wanted to, let's see, on page 13, I just wanted to note that the police, that's a fiduciary fund. So for the city, that is the police pension fund. That is just shy, right around 1.2 million at the end of 2018. The prior year was just over 1.1 million. So an increase of around 88, 90,000 for the year. And we'll talk about that a little more in just a moment. Some financial statement disclosures I wanted to bring up, note five, I thought was interesting as always, which is the report on the IMF funds, the state program. I just wanted to point out that at December 31 of 18, the regular plan, regular employees' plan, was funded 91%, which by all means of a defined benefit pension plan seems to be pretty well-funded. But last year it was 104% at the end of 2017. I can't tell you why the difference is. I'm betting it's because the stock market was down from last year, 12/31/17 to 12/31/18. Right now, the market's at almost the highest it's been, so it's probably rebounded since year end. But I don't know that for sure. And then the SLAT program, which is the other side for the sheriff's law enforcement, that went from 85% last year down to 67%. So numbers to watch. I think they've probably rebounded. Again, you can check that on imf.org, but, you know, something to watch and how that can affect you by your rates going up to pay into IMF over time, so. The next note is note six, police pension fund. Same thing. I want to kind of point out here that this police pension fund is currently, at the end of last year, was 32% funded. That's low. The prior year, it was 35%. So again, it's not staying up. So as you'll notice, the state keeps requiring your minimum contributions to this plan to go up. For 2018, they had decided, they had computed that you needed to pay in at least $203,000, and the city paid in $211,000. So their idea is if you keep paying what they say, you'll make it in the end. But again, it's a number to watch. Let's see, note eight, I don't want to go into it, but that's long-term liabilities. I'll just detail to you all the debt the city currently has, and when the payoffs are going to occur on those. Kind of interesting information. And page 42 of the report has a listing of all of the capital asset costs for the year. So again, the wastewater treatment plant, the public works campus, and a couple of, and we'll each other leave. I owe the maintenance. We issued two letters in conjunction with our audit this year and in previous years. The first is called the Communication of Management, which we say that we believe that there is one material weakness with the city of Monticello as far as the audit goes. And that's the fact that we prepare the financial statements and we audit those financial statements. Because the city currently doesn't have an employee that is a CPA and knows all of the ins and outs of governmental accounting and as far as no disclosures and the crazy details. You could also go out and hire someone to do that. The cost of doing so would far outweigh, it would make your cost a lot more in a year to have an audit and someone prepare it. As such, the city's always said, why don't you guys just do it? And we'll get this letter that says that's what we're doing. We have one client at MCK now, and we do a lot of audits. We have one client that prepares their own financial statements. Every other client gets a similar note on their audit, so. The final letter, which you might want to look at, so at some time, and I've kind of done it tonight, gone over everything, is basically an oversight of what we do on an audit. Not a great read, but it is something that we have to do for Academy of Audit Standards. So that's my report for this year. If you have any questions now, I'd be willing to take them, and obviously later if not, I'm always available.
Anyone have questions? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, resolution 2019-31, conditional use to allow a multifamily dwelling use at an urban residential zoned property at 404 North Charter Street. Callie?
Mayor, Chris and Lynn Corey who are here are the respective owners of 404 North Charter Street, which is a single-family residence with an attached garage. The attached garage has an existing apartment above it. The property utilizes a multifamily dwelling, meaning the single-family owner of the apartment. Since the apartment was constructed in the late 60s and continued the use as such until 2018. However, we could not find any zoning action on file, making it an existing non-conforming use. Not a big deal, happens all the time. However, non-conforming uses are allowed to continue the operating unless the use discontinues for a period of six months or more. Since this apartment was last utilized in 2018, it exceeded that vacancy clause. So in order to report or continue utilizing it as a multifamily residence, they must adhere to current standards, which means they are applying, requesting conditional use to allow continued use of the apartment, making it a multifamily dwelling use in an urban residential zone. Off-street parking requirements are currently not met. However, they do have plans to expand the driveway to accommodate those off-street off-street parking needs prior to renting the apartment. A public notice was published in the May 31, 2019 edition of the local paper. A notice was sent out to all adjacent property owners by certified mailing as per state statute. Staff receives no comments regarding this issue. We could go tonight. The Planning and Zoning Board held a hearing at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting in which a public comment was made. After further discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request. Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2019-31, conditional use to allow a multiple family dwelling use at urban residential RE1 zoned property at 404 North Charter Street?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? They're here if you want to ask them. Hearing your same, then Jill, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Veris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Abstain.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Seabans?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2019-32, conditional use to allow an accessory structure in a single-family residential RE1 zoned property at 2015 East Washington Street. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. The school district has partnered with Clean Energy Design Group for a project at 2015 East Washington. That is the Monticello middle school property to construct a ground-mounted array of solar panels here in case we need aerial, to serve the middle school facility. The structures will be approximately six feet in height and considered low-profile. The area for the panels will take up, panels alone, 4.9 acres, be constructed on the southwest portion of the property, surrounded by six-foot fence. The contractor plans to install the habitat-friendly ground planting to be continuously operated and maintained by Clean Energy Design Group surrounding the panels. Section 153020C2 of the municipal code states that conditional use permit is required for any additional or other accessory structures not listed in the code in an RE1 zone. In addition, there was a late update. Last week, the contractor submitted a new site design shifting the, let's see, shifting the panels to the west another 59 feet, making the setback from the residential 259 feet, and then the setback from the south, 50 feet. They've also proposed installing a tree line against the west property line where the residential homes are. A public notice was published in the May 31, 2019 edition of the High County Republican, and notice was sent to all adjacent property owners by certified mailing as per state statute. Staff received a letter from an adjacent property owner prior to the hearing, which was distributed at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Planning and Zoning Board held a hearing at, again, a week ago tonight. Public comment was solicited, and several individuals spoke with concerns of noise, the view, safety, property tax impact, degeneration, vegetation control, as well as the need to find other options. Another individual spoke in support of the project and educational green energy efficiency benefits. Several members of the Planning and Zoning Board commented on research they found, concluding that solar projects have no impact on property values. After further discussion, and there was a lot of discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request, five yes, two no, and zero absent. I included submitted letters from individuals in opposition and support of this project. Put the agenda in your packets, you'd receive that as well.
Thank you. Are there comments, questions?
Am I looking at this correctly? I understand the concerns. I'm not trying, I don't want to belittle anything, but if I'm looking at that correctly, on that side by the house, by the houses, there's a privacy fence there too, correct?
No.
Yes, correct.
Just on the corner, here's those privacy.
Let me look a little closer. Are you sure?
We live there.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is there a proposed privacy fence? In other words, it looks to me like the entire end of that is privacy fence. Not everything else is the chain link, I understand, but I'm just asking, is that what you guys see too?
Well, and they are proposing adding, what do you call privacy, glass, and on that west side of the you see the chain link fence surrounding the area.
I was just trying to look and see what I'm looking at.
But that elevation's over 20 feet, you can see right into.
No amount of shrubs and heights, low. None.
That's okay. If someone wants to ask a question of someone in the audience, please ask them specifically. Because I'm not supposed to let that happen. I've got Steve under control tonight. I really want the whole crowd to be controlled, if it can happen. And I understand the importance of all of this. That's why I'm being a little bit more flexible than I probably should be, and I'll be criticized for that in some quarters, so. Did you get the answer to your question? Anyone else have a comment or question they'd like to ask?
Well, I was in that meeting on the Planning and Zoning Board, and I was one of the two that voted against it. You know, I feel that this is a project that, once this happens, this is basically no going back for at least 15 years. And for savings of somewhere, the first year, Vic said around 30,000, last year about 70,000. It would save the district about $1.2 million over 25 years, which sounds like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, I didn't think it was worth, you know, the hassle and the potential problems with the neighbors, so I did vote no.
Anyone else?
On, like, some of the people, like, was the school there when you moved there?
May I answer?
Yeah.
When we bought the lot, the school was there. We were told by Doug Hughes, we were concerned about that because Mansfield stuck an elevator, brand-new elevator, 300 feet from my home. That's how I ended up over here. He said it is a prime basin, it is school property, the most they could ever put on there is a soccer field or a baseball field. We built in good faith, put it on the roof.
So was the school, like, was it there? It was there when you moved there, right?
Right. When I bought, I have about three realtors, including mine. She told me, oh, that's the best way you can make the school own that property. They'll never build anything back there. And she said the same. And then when two other realtors found out where I was thinking about buying, they were like, oh, honey, yeah, you should. The school won't ever put anything back there, but you won't flood. I promise, I can even, it was Shelley Crawford, she's not a realtor anymore, so I don't mind saying her name.
Well, I live across the street from the school, and it was there when I bought. And it's their property. I mean, I just feel like, unfortunately, you know, times change and they get to do whatever they want. Because that's their property. You could live by the most awful yard in the, and you just, you don't get to pick who your neighbor is. So unfortunately, I'm sorry about that. I don't mind living by the school, I've actually loved it. And they're totally changing every single thing over there right now by the school. So it's totally, you know, up in the air. It's just part of, it's just part of life and moving forward, and I'm sorry.
Do I, Mayor, do I understand correctly that we're the last vote that happens before it actually happens? If we don't vote yes, it doesn't happen, is that right?
We just rejected this particularly. They can come back with something else, I assume.
They can come back with something else.
They can come back with something else.
Okay. This is just a zoning issue as well.
Right, that's your decision tonight, not so much what could happen there in the future, but as it relates to this project.
Right.
Because it is zoned residential.
Yes.
The school board voted seven to nothing?
Seven to nothing, yes.
Why not?
I, with this and not being able to go to the school board meeting, a number of you people who are in the audience, that's my ward. I have knocked on door to door, knocked and talked to the people, but they're my people in my ward. I feel like their purchase of the property and their building in good faith, the upside-down of this situation falls completely on the homeowner, that they will ultimately lose property value. They don't have the option of opting out, you know, and saying, well, we don't like this. We don't want to live in this area anymore. Not that they want to live in Monticello on the other side of town, but this is not appealing to us. Unfortunately, the way they're going to opt out is, I think, the potential to lose several thousand dollars on the value of their home. I don't think that's fair, and I'm sorry if I'm tipping you to my vote, but I cannot support that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2019-32, conditional use to allow an accessory structure on a single-family residential RE1 zoned property at 2015 East Washington Street?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing or seeing, then Jill, may we have a roll call?
Mr. Frericks?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Brock?
No.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Coon?
Abstain.
Motion does not pass.
Thank you. Okay. That's the decision. Okay? If you want to skedaddle, you're welcome. Yeah, thank you.
You say they're homes, they're not houses or homes.
They're not.
Moving on, ordinance 2019-33, sets the public hearing date for the establishment of a business district in Monticello. Is that you? I'm never sure.
This is an ordinance, so you'll, you'll have to do the vote on the way.
I haven't done that yet. I've gotten that part yet.
I know. The city council recently directed city staff and Moran Economic Development to proceed with the proposed business district. At city council meeting on June 10th, city council was presented with eligibility study, a draft ordinance that sets the public hearing date and preliminary boundary map of the business district. Ordinance 2019-33 sets the date for the required public hearing for the evening of July 22nd at 6:30 prior to your regularly scheduled city council meeting that same evening. The required public notice of this public hearing will appear in July 3rd. In July 10th, additions of the Piott County Journal Republican. This simply sets the date for the public hearing as required by state statute. It is recommended that the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2019-33 tonight due to the schedule of events for this to, for the business district to occur if you guys approve of it at that later date. Thank you.
Is there a motion to waive the second hearing?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I need a roll call, please, Jill.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
And Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2019-33, sets the public hearing date for the establishment of a business district in Monticello to July 22nd, 2019 at 6:30 p.m.?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, Jill.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, Resolution 2019-34, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, Center Bridge Street and Marion Street Projects.
Yes.
Terry.
A little bit of background on this project, because this one and the next one, kind of a shock to the system for us, and so I want to go over the background and then answer any questions you might have. So, Monticello City Council included $1.8 million of the motor fuel tax expenditures in the FY 2019 budget for the pavement rehabilitation of Center Street/Bridge Street from Market Street to our jurisdictional boundary, and for the pavement rehabilitation of Marion Street from Market to Piott Street, including in that was the construction engineering. On June 14th, 2019, the Illinois Department of Transportation held a bid opening for this project along with numerous other statewide projects. Cross-construction and open road paving bid on this project. Open road paving bid, $1.839 million, and cross-construction was the apparent low bidder at $1,712,280.05. Our consulting engineers' cost estimate was $1,482,71.90. That was the construction cost estimate. IDOT's cost estimate was below the one submitted by our engineers. This resolution is required to notify the Illinois Department of Transportation that we concur with the award of the project to cross-construction and officially request an additional $200,000 to the previous requested amount of $1.2 million. For an adjusted motor fuel tax expenditure request for construction and construction engineering in the amount of $1,400,000. Please note that $500,000 has been designated for use with this project from our federal surface transportation urban monies for a total construction and engineering, construction engineering cost of $1,900,000. I would like to say that of, this was June 14th bid letting, of the 18 predominantly hot-mix asphalt projects, which this is a predominantly hot-mix asphalt project, of the 18, in that bid letting, six were under the engineer's cost estimate. So two-thirds of those predominantly HMA projects were over the cost estimate. And we're, we've kind of seen that with not only this school district, Champaign School District. I know that a private developer here in town witnessed the same thing, rebid his project three times and still came in over budget. We don't normally see this, so there's a lot of factors going into this, but it is recommended the city council discuss and approve or disapprove Resolution 2019-34 as submitted. So this is notifying IDOT, we previously requested $1,200,000, we're going to need another $200,000 for a total of $1,400,000. This will still be under our appropriation ordinance. With everything said and done, we do not have to amend the appropriation ordinance, as well as I have always said, since the jurisdictional transfer, the $6 million and change for the bridge over Old Route 47, carrying Old Route 47 over Sangamon River, of that money, until we get that bridge demolition and the alternate 4A or any other alternate access, I don't want to spend down that money below $4 million. All these projects, including the bike and hike trail and others, we will still be above $4 million in the motor fuel tax money. Again, I don't believe we want to go under that, but we're getting a, with this project, we're getting two major roads in major disrepair resurfaced. So, just want to let you know that, as I've preached for years now, the $4 million is kind of my magic number, do not go under, and we're still above that.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-34, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, Center Street Bridge and Marion Street Project? Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments, clarifications?
No options, right? Really, what are options?
Well, I don't have to do it. You don't? Yeah, well, we could, we could, we could reject all bids and re-advertise and rebid I don't know if this particular project, for what it's worth, if this particular project would be done in calendar year, our calendar year, fiscal year 19, but that is an option. We would definitely have to go that route.
But then you take example of that too, like, if it's not possible.
Yeah.
It could, because there's too much work. The contractors right now.
When was the last time it was resurfaced?
I can't remember.
How long, and how long will this last?
So we took the jurisdictional transfer in 1998. That's when that project, IDOT came in, resurfaced it, and handed it over to the city of Monticello. And it's...
20 years.
Yeah. That's the Center Bridge Street, Marion Street. Who knows when that was resurfaced? And when we did the other project on Marion Street, we ran out of money. We did Arlington Road, Marion Street, Washington, Independence, and just couldn't do that stretch of Marion.
Anyone else?
If we take it under the current bid, when, because I get asked this all the time, when are we going to fix it? When is the proposed construction to start?
I do not have a construction start date, but it is to be done this fiscal year.
Prior to the end of 2019.
It is supposed to be done by then.
But realistically, the option of closing and rebidding July 1st, that's not going to happen. Here it comes. It's not going to work.
Our, our engineer, he advised us that if, because they won't, they can't start until the state's fiscal year, the minimum state's fiscal year 2020, which is after July 1st, which is right around the clock, his projected end, end time was around the October range when they would finish, and then if it was started as soon as they could.
That's with the current bid.
Right. That was based, that was what he told us, based on bid letting dates a couple months ago, is that he anticipated it could be wrapped up by October.
Yeah, that was going proceeding tonight, starting the, awarding the project, getting the contractors submit the surety and all that, blessing it, and sending it back to IDOT, and them finally blessing it, and that gets them going.
The additional $200,000 you're requesting, if that's turned down, we will just put that money out. You're asking them for an additional $200,000 for the project? If they say no, then we will, we will do that.
IDOT has already approved that project. They are asking us, do you concur with that, with that number? And so tonight, by approving this, we're going to say, yeah, we concur. And secondly, you know, it's our motor fuel tax money, but you have to ask IDOT to spend it.
Right.
And that's what we'll do tonight. If approved, we concur with the bid, and IDOT already has, and because of that, we're going to ask for another $200,000.
Okay, I understand.
So it would be $200,000 that we couldn't use for another project down the road, because it's our, ultimately, it's our, it's our allotment of money to use, but, but the state has to approve how we use it.
Yeah, the state will approve every single piece of any motor fuel tax money.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second, I do, boy.
We do.
So, could I have a roll call? Yes, Jill.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-35, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, Washington Street and Market Street Project. Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. Another motor fuel tax project. So, a little bit of background on this project, the Monticello City Council included $324,000 of MFT expenditures in the FY 2019 budget for the Market Street pedestrian crossing, Washington Street, streetscape work and associated improvements, including the construction engineering. On June 11th, 2019, the city of Monticello and our engineering consultant held a bid opening for this project here at City Hall. A&R Services, open road paving and deuce construction on bid on the project, excuse me, open road paving bid $643,120.64. Deuce construction bid $476,875. And A&R Services was the apparent low bidder at $393,944.04. Our consulting engineer's construction cost estimate was $273,906.50. This resolution is required to notify the Illinois Department of Transportation that we desire to award the project to A&R Services and officially request $124,000 in addition to the previously requested amount of $324,000 for total motor fuel tax expenditure for construction and construction engineering for this project of $448,000. Awarding the project now will allow for the best opportunity to have the project completed by the Monticello Breion on Saturday, September 21st, 2019. As we discussed, this, another bid that we, we had locally here came in over budget, or over the cost estimate. I could tell you that the, the tenants and owners, we had that town hall meeting the morning of the 10th, there is a buzz and an electricity with those folks that they want to finally see this thing come to fruition. This has been discussed and I think budgeted, probably, at least budgeted two years and discussed for four. So, in order to get this project done and completed, substantially completed by the Monticello Breion date, if you would need to approve this additional request in the amount of $124,000 tonight, or disprove Resolution 2019-35. As Alderman Reed said, we can reject all bids and rebid it. This one will definitely not happen this year if we reject all bids and rebid it.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-35, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, Washington Street and Market Street Project?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? This is the same, the same hymn, it's just in a different key, correct, basically?
Yeah. Any thoughts on when they would start that? I mean, that's literally two and a half months.
Well, they said they can get it done.
How many working days? Do you remember, Brad?
It was a total of six weeks worth of work.
And you know, the weather's been just perfect for construction.
It was at 35.
Yeah. The equated liar on six weeks worth of, six eight weeks worth.
Questions coming? Hearing or seeing, then can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 7, Alderman's reports. Wendell?
Nothing from the ward, but I would like to take the opportunity to welcome Alderman Coon to his seat. You have taken a position from a gentleman that cared a lot about his work, listened to his people, tried to balance their thoughts with his thoughts and the thoughts of the city. You have some big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that you're confident in doing it, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All I have.
Mr. Burris?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I have some big shoes to fill, too. I understand where you're going, so I'm not going to follow him.
Mike, you don't have a report, I don't.
I don't.
Aren't you glad to be here?
I am.
I know you are. What's your name? Thomas. And that's not Pam, it's Joyce, that's something else.
I'll just echo what Wendy said earlier, same thing, so congratulations, glad to have you here.
Thank you. I have no report.
Thank you.
Tammy?
God? The mayor, last night, I'm anything for you.
Yeah, you were out.
He scored, he was going for a while, and Mike brought him aboard, but.
I was going for a while, and Mike brought in boardman.
See, the demographics have changed. There's some people that applied for that chair said that we had no one under 40 on this council, and I found out that that's not true. We, this is a wide swath of ages on this panel now, so.
I'm just, I'm just a day, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Do you have a report?
No.
He didn't leave you one? Chief didn't leave you one? He's on vacation.
This is Dayton, I know you're taking her out for ice cream, this is her fragrant jam, okay? Terry, you have anything to add?
I'd like to wel, welcome Mike to the council as well. I'd like to thank Alderman Frericks came in, he took me up on my offer, like Alderman Burris did, came in, had a good visit with, there was a lot of city staff out, were kind of busy going, running around like a chicken with its head cut off, so I'd make that same offer to you, Alderman Kuhn, try to set up a time that works best for, for you, we'll make it work on our end. I think Rodney and John can verify, it was enlightening, to say the least, and you probably know most of the staff, but yeah, I'd like to make that offer to you as well, so congratulations.
I would definitely take you up on that, and I look forward to working with this, this council as well as the other members of the staff and city. I think we've got a lot of things we want to do, and I look forward to playing a role in that.
Okay. Has it, anyone else have anything to add for the good of the cause? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any of, who said aye? Thank you. Bye.